The meeting is called to order. Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer? Mrs. Lane? Here. Mrs. Rich?
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher? Here. Mr. Kraftcheck? Mr. Parzak?
Here.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press and the Cape May County Herald on January 6, 2018. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll open the work session with public safety.
And public safety will begin with the court administrator.
Good afternoon. Things are running smooth in the courtroom. We've recently received our authorization from the state to destroy files, so we're going to be starting to do that. And we're still once a month per court until May, when we start picking up some more. Any questions?
How many files you have to destroy?
Depends.
But it's a certain years you're allowed to do?
Only certain years can... Motor vehicle or three, criminal or five DUIs, never.
Wow.
So...
Interesting.
Any questions? No questions? Thank you. Record time. Roger is unavailable today. We all have his monthly report. So, January, we had 24 fire calls and 28 EMS calls. And those calls comprised three actual fires, six hazardous conditions where there was no fire present, 12 false alarms, and other miscellaneous items. That's the highlight. And rolling right along, that's it for the fire departments. And now we'll hear from Chief Shudder.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The monthly report for January 2018 for the police department, there were 86 motor vehicle stops, five adults were arrested. In terms of an update for personnel, Officers Dixon and McCouch graduated recruit training from the police academy. Officer Dixon is currently conducting or is riding with a field training officer, and we expect her to be completed sometime March or so, so she'll be off by herself. Officer McCouch is undergoing a modified field training program because he, prior to the academy, he already went through it. So, we just, you know, just to keep him brushed up on things, we sent him through a modified type of field training officer program. We have four, three of two recruits currently attending the winter academy, and we right now have projected five for the spring academy with one returning class two from 2017, which will bring us to 10 class twos for 2018. In terms of the building update, as you can probably see that the Sallyport and squad room, they were demolished on January 22. And Captain Palmer and I met with Ray Roberts, Jerry Blackman, the architect, and the construction foreman this morning, just as a progress update. Everything seems to be going along perfectly fine. And just on a final side note, we had talked about it previously, but it's in full swing now, excuse the pun. DPW has set the first gate at the end of the beach ends. So, there's the pun, swing gate. It's something else. It's impressive. So, they will begin installing at the other beach ends as soon as they're done with the first one. That's it.
What's our plan going forward as far as keeping those things locked? Are we just going to lock them on busy weekends and occasions? Or what are we...
Definitely, my plan would be definitely for large occasions like 4th of July. That'll be up for discussion to see how you guys would like to work that. You know, if you want to keep them closed, you know, throughout the summer and then open them back up, you know, in the fall for the fishermen and things like that. There will still be access, foot access along the paths.
Like your storms when there's the...
Correct.
That's correct.
It's like it presents the public safety issue when then we could close them then.
You have to brag about your attendance.
I was just going to say that.
I don't.
Congratulations.
Well, there's, besides you, there's others.
There's others.
So brag about them.
Very good. Thank you.
And then you can put you last.
We had several officers, Sergeant Hartzell, Sergeant Jackson, Officer McCouch, Officer Argenzano, and Captain Palmer went through 2017 without any sick time.
And you did...
And some of them have consecutive years of sickness.
And you did 15 years without an absence. Congratulations.
Thanks. Good genes, I guess.
Shouldn't leave that out.
Yeah.
Well, congratulations, Chief. We'll talk about the gate closures at the committee meeting in March because I guess we can't, you can't keep them all locked all the time, right? Because doesn't that...
Not all year round. Yeah, not all year round, no.
Yeah.
I don't think it's really beneficial for all year round, but like I said, the discussion, I think, will be for the summertime, you know.
Right, because there's permitted access.
Right. And in one respect, why would we lock them only on 4th of July after we go through all this work when there's multiple people, thousands of people out on that beach, you know, even on just weekends, you know, maybe not so much during the day here and there, but the weekends, I mean, you know.
And then we're going to have to address the drone issue too at the committee meeting in a few weeks. We brought that up several months ago about drones, what are we going to do moving forward? So, we'll kick that around as well.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
Sue had a question as far as with the gates on rescue calls.
Well, that's...
The ambulance, I guess, will be carrying a set of keys or... Is it going to be the same thing as a Knox box key? Is there Knox boxes on these or how's it going to have access to keys?
All the keys will be keyed the same. The fire department will have the key. The U.S. will have the key. DPW, you know, they can get off the bridge.
Okay. Okay.
Captain Basacco is not present from the Beach Patrol. That's expected this time of year. I don't think he really comes in the wintertime. I don't know of any problems that he has. And we got late word that the OEM coordinator is unable to attend as well. He got tied up, I assume at the Coast Guard base.
Yeah, he's tied up at work.
So, that concludes public safety.
That concludes public safety. Thank you. Recreation and tourism.
Miranda. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
So, February has flown by and the spring season is quickly upon me, so already feeling behind April. But the Wildwood Catholic Boys Tennis Team's already starting practice on March 1st. So, all the high school spring sports are allowed to start on March 1st. So, you'll see them out there playing, weather permitting. So, we are in full swing. Fortunately that we have a couple of warm days ahead of us that we'll be able to prep the courts and get those wind screens back up. Our tennis professional is also going to be running some spring tennis clinics for the five to 10-year-old kiddos. They're going to be beginning May 4th and run until June 8th, I believe. They're going to run every Friday at the 96th Street Tennis Courts from 4:00 to 5:00 PM. So, the registration's live and available. All the other recreation-related programs that are really geared towards the summer, they'll be online and available to peruse through April 1st, no later than April 1st. And then registration for the property owners is going to begin May 1st. So, there are the dates that our targets are set to begin. But as for the Mayor's Wellness Campaign, that's underway. It's going really well. We have 75 people that have registered for the program, and we have anywhere from 55 to about 60 actively participating in the lectures each week. So, we have gone through two lectures. So, we're headed into week four now for this week. So, I hear nothing but positive feedback. So, it's getting, it's doing its purpose. People are trying new fitness-related activities and meeting new people. And one of these days, we'll get out for a walk. Seems to be hot great weather on Monday mornings, so we'll try again. From the tourism standpoint, exhibitor applications for the 56th Annual Stone Harbor Arts and Crafts Festival are due next Wednesday, so at which point I'll evaluate to see if any sites are still available. They've been flooding in, so I'm really thrilled to see the outpour of support that they know, the exhibitors know that it's headed in the right direction. So, I'm thrilled with that. So, be able to evaluate that during the March meeting a little bit better for you, so you have a clearer picture of where we stand, but...
Did we raise the fee on...
Fees stayed the same.
They did stay the same, okay.
Stayed the same, yeah. So, the next part, soon as part of the Cape May County Travel Show Cooperative on Saturday, March 3rd, I will be attending the Philadelphia Flower Show with a tourism representative from the county, Marnie, myself. We're manning and promoting, manning the booth and promoting Stone Harbor on opening day. So, on Saturday, March 3rd, that's when it opens, and it's a week-long show. And this is the one that has 263,000 people attended in that one week. So, I really think this is going to be a great opportunity to showcase what Stone Harbor has to offer. And Marnie and I are currently distributing the Chambers Leftover 2017 Vacation Guides because they're beautifully done. So, it's an all-encompassing, you know, vacation guide that's already done and no cost to us because it's already been outlaid. So, we're working on a creative way to track our return on investment for that one particular show and be able to obtain email addresses and, you know, be able to correspond with those people that we make good connections with. But from the recent travel show report from the county, food and beverage tourism and ecotourism seem to be the front runners in what people want to talk about. So, I'll just brush up on all my knowledge and I'll send you an email with your many emails that you get and just see, you know, from Stone Harbor's standpoint, what can I highlight for our assets that we have.
So, that concludes just the highlights. Anybody have any questions on specifics?
Miranda?
Yeah.
Tonight, we're going to entertain a resolution for the proposed fees for recreation.
Yes.
And before we do that, I thought perhaps you might want to point out if there's anything that you want us to focus on or that you would like to explain before we vote.
There was only two changes from the 2017 fees, the one being incorporating a pickleball open play pass fee. So, again, it functions very differently from tennis in the fact that they travel in packs. So, when they come to play, they sit down, 24 will go on court. As one group loses, they all rotate in. So, how it works, they would play for, each level would play for two hours. And so, this open pass would allow them to not have to pay the daily fee if they think they can capitalize and be there for the majority of the summertime. It's just, it's essentially a membership, but it's only during that open play pass, very different from a tennis membership. So, they're playing for about an hour, maximum an hour and a half as they all rotate in, but that just gives them the incentive of purchasing that open play pass to...
Each person?
Each person.
Each person gets their own...
Own...
$75 pass.
$75 pass. So, you can look at it like a membership, but it can only be used during those open play times. So, whereas the tennis memberships are going to stay the same, they get the membership, they get the advantages of booking the court time 24 hours in advance. So, tennis memberships will stay the same, but still a $2 daily drop-in for the pickleball if they just happen to be in for the week. They just pay $2 per session for those two hours of open play. And the only other change was the sports clinics. So, in doing all of the reporting last year on what our expenses were and revenues coming in, we deemed it necessary to raise the $35 sports clinic rate up to $75 for the kiddos participating in the youth sports clinics during the day. So, the morning hours, the 9:00 and 10:00 o'clock sessions, whether it's basketball, soccer, pickleball, frisbee we're doing this year, it would be a $75 charge for seven total weeks, for two times a week, so 14 total sessions, which equivalates to $5 a session and eliminating the $5 daily drop-in rate. And this is just security and structure. So, we know we're setting it up more of like a camp so we know who's exactly on our roster, who we're checking in when the parents drop them off, and who we're checking out. We want to make sure that my staff is more accountable for who's in their care. So...
Go ahead.
Yeah, make the parents more accountable. So, it tended to be the $35 rate was just a little too affordable so parents would sign up their children, take a spot for the entire season, and then I wouldn't have any other spots available for the people that could really commit to all 14 sessions. So, this is going to weed them out a little bit.
Good. I think we did something similar to that in 2017, am I correct? Or is this, in 2017, did we not do something similar to that just to put the onus on the parents? No.
No, so it's been in the works, but really...
We talked about it.
We talked about it this whole time, but until we got the numbers back from the summer, then it was apparent that we just needed to raise the fees because the cost of the equipment is not going down. If any, that $35 has been the same for, I think, the 70s. So, it was time to bump it up a little bit and just make it more cost-effective. So, you know, my expenses and then salary and wages, the revenues that I'm taking in are just, you know, the goal is to make it a even balance, a win-win.
Thank you.
So, that's, yeah, they're the only changes. Any other questions?
Any questions for Miranda? Her big season's coming up.
Oh, yeah. All right. Thank you, everyone.
Anything else from recreation and tourism? No? Natural resources.
You want Jill to go first?
Jill, you're first with your report. Isn't that great?
You have a lot of time. You've been yipped the last couple of sessions.
Go slow.
Natural Resources has lots of time.
Go real slow.
Go.
We owe you this much time.
True, true. All right, we'll start out with the bulkhead ordinance. I believe you got another copy of that just to refresh your memory of where we left off. We still are primarily looking at establishing what the acceptable bulkhead height will be. We met at our last flood ad hoc committee meeting. It was a very lengthy, productive discussion on the bulkhead heights, and we will continue this discussion at our next meeting scheduled for the 27th. But I wanted to give you guys a brief summary of our discussion and get some feedback if you have anything. And I want to thank Lenore for taking really good notes for me. Tried to look at my own and it was like chicken scratch, so I appreciate it. All right, so part of the discussion, if we were to go to eight feet, that would basically protect 70% of our town from flooding. And our lowest dune elevation is at nine feet. And if you remember, when Remington was here, they had these, the sheet, the maps that showed the different elevation heights and in red showed the protection areas. And with, like I said, with going with the eight, you would be protecting 70% of the town. There was a consensus at the time to require the eight feet when there was a new bulkhead, when there was a sale, or if there was greater than 40% renovation. There is some concern, however, with requiring for the sale, so this will be something that we will revisit when we have our discussion next week on that. But like I said, the recommendation was at this point to be eight, eight feet based on the tidal flooding, a currency, frequency data, sea level rise data, and our CRS requirements. Interim fixes, there was several options that we threw out there with the low bulkheads, but no, for property owners with low bulkheads, but no renovation or sale of property triggers to require them to fix them. One of the suggestions was for bulkheads lower than 5.5 in the NAVD-88 would have 24 months to go up to 5 and 1/2 feet in the NAVD-88. If your bulkhead is currently between 5 and 1/2 and 6 feet, we would want them to comply with the ordinance by 2050 regardless of whether there's a sale or renovation. The 5.5 cutoff was based on the flood recurrence information. Bulkheads under five feet have tidal flood recurrence of .8 times per year, but those five and five, 5.5 and over have once every five years. So, we felt that that cut was going to pick up a lot more of the ones that are more frequent. Some additional discussions were the number of bulkheads impacted with taking a grandfather approach. We determined after looking at Stu Farrell's study, there were 194 points, not bulkheads that were below the 5.5. So, Lenore and I are going to convert those points to the bulkheads. In order to have a better understanding, we'll use the Excel files that Stu has given us, and we'll be able to chart that out so that each individual property will know exactly what that height is. Whereas we have some properties that he's noted several different points. So, it'll be one height per property. And then we can analyze that as to any of the, any of the requirements we put, how many properties will actually be affected by that. And we discuss how to make the property owners comply, whether we want to look at a special assessment leaning the property, any kind of loan programs that may be out there. We discussed the CRS required planning, which is out to 2100, and the intermediate sea level rise rate curve. And I did hand out copies of Lenore's reports that look at that and take that into consideration. One of the things that if we look at our current ordinance and you convert that to the NAVD-88, it would be 6.19 feet. And Avalon is currently at seven feet and is among the lowest of the surrounding communities, and we are currently the lowest. And again, like I said, we will continue the discussion on this on the 28th. So, and I don't know if Lenore, if you have any...
27th, right?
27th, correct. Not to confuse you anymore.
You're rushing it.
27th. So, I don't know if you have any other...
I thought that we said five years on those really low bulkheads, and then now we're thinking, well, that's five years of allowing this flooding to continue, and maybe we should consider two years, correct?
We did.
That's part of the discussion, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, we did, but we did say five years, but then in thinking about it further, and that's why this meeting on Tuesday is so important because there's a whole lot of variables here that, you know, we're kind of like circling around some answers. So, I think, like Jill said, the meeting a few weeks ago, I thought was really great. It was like two hours and we got a lot done. We can, we have to fine-tune it now and start to zero in. But the five years, we first said, okay, well, we'll give you five years to comply to be fair, but when you think about it, if we have a handful of properties with bulkheads at four feet that are problems right now, do we really want to give them five years to keep flooding neighborhoods? I think, you know, the really short, the really short bulkheads, maybe we give them two years, maybe we give them 18 months.
Because we walked out of there thinking, okay, mines are made up. And then...
When you think about things...
Then you think about some of the stuff, and we walked out of there saying, five years. But then after giving it thought, saying maybe two, do you allow those conditions to persist in that neighborhood for five years?
It's a long time and a lot of flooding.
Yeah, and that's why it's important to identify by property, how many there are, you know, and we can look at the different areas they're at, and if it's an area that we've already identified that there is a re-incurred flooding. So, that would be even more of a priority. So, like I said, we will definitely continue...
And what was the other one? We walked out of there confident that if a property exchanged hands...
Correct, and that's...
And then we, a couple of weeks later, we're like, well, wait a second.
Right.
A property could exchange hands in a matter of two years.
If you...
And then we walked out of there saying, well, no. So, as soon as we thought we had it, and then, you know, upon reflection, you're like, ah, maybe not.
If you require, if you require that stipulation that if the property is sold or changes hands, you're going to run into situations where somebody may have just built a house five years ago and put in a brand-new bulkhead that's up to code, and now five years later, you're going to tell them they got to redo it. And, you know, doing a bulkhead is a pretty invasive operation. I mean, you tear up the entire back of the property. So, your landscaping, your pavers, your decking, your docks, it all gets ripped off. And I think we'd have a hard sell on properties that are relatively new to require them to do that, particularly if we're going to say, if you're at six feet, you have till 2050. If I'm that property owner, I'm saying, well, wait a minute, I'm at six feet, how come I got to do it now? I don't have an answer for that. So, we got to, we have to go, we have to talk about this some more on Tuesday.
Right. And then any input from you guys would be encouraged.
Has any research been done into the possibility of getting loans for people to do this that would make it more palatable? Loans from like the federal government or the state or... Any, anything that would help sell this program and make it an easier pill to swallow?
Yeah. Would NJEIT funding, would that, would this type of work fall under that or no?
Probably not.
Okay. But one of the possibilities would be for that type of loan where the borough would actually issue the bonds and then enter into an agreement where it would be a low-interest loan to the property owner.
Back to the property owner. I would think that most of the really low ones, and I could be totally wrong, are with the older properties.
That's true.
Is that right?
Yeah, that would make sense.
Which means they're probably the local residents whose wealth is in their home and that they would need some type of assistance.
Is there ever a possibility for the borough to be able to extend a loan to just that type of owner and have it repaid upon the sale of the home?
You can't do that. I mean, I have seen it, I've seen it several different ways, including that way. Community development block grants usually work that way, whereupon the sale of the property, the proceeds, the loan balance is taken out of the proceeds from the sale. I mean, so it can be structured that way. I mean, you have, you have, you know, options there.
Well, when you think about the opportunities that it would present us with to be able to save on the kinds of repairs that we have to do after flooding, if it's going to really mitigate floods, it might be worth our thinking, our thoughts anyway, to perhaps pursue something like that where we, on the front end, we're the payers.
Yeah, and you, you can do that under what I refer to as a special assessment also, and those you can go out as far as like a 10-year, you would give them like 10 years to pay it back. You have the option to charge interest or not charge interest. I've seen it done either way. So, like I said, so we have, definitely have several different options to choose from.
Do we know at this point if there are any homes that have changed hands where a new home has been built and they still have a four-foot, four-and-a-half-foot bulkhead? Do we know anything like that?
I don't know, and I'd have to really go in and look at it specifically.
I talked to one of the bulkhead construction companies a few weeks ago, who does a lot of work here in town, and his experience is it's extremely rare that that happens where somebody builds a new property and doesn't, or builds a new home, rather, and doesn't renew the bulkhead.
That's what I was thinking, so...
Well, if they have to build a new home, they would have to bring it up.
Under, yeah, under...
Then they have to.
Under this law, they would.
I'm just wondering how many have slipped through since we have not taken action, how many have...
Under the existing ordinance, they don't have to.
Correct.
Correct. But this one, they would.
They would.
This one, they will, which is...
Build a new house, you put a bulkhead up.
Yes.
Right.
So, if they left it, if they build a new house and have a four-foot bulkhead, they're going to have to, they're going to have to fix that in short order, whether we decide on two years or five years.
Right.
But I agree, the sooner the better. Let's just find a way to make it a little easier for those people who truly would need the help.
Especially if we're given two years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, especially.
So, we can do that. One of the other things with, with the bulkheads, Public Works has identified two borough-owned bulkheads that need to be replaced. that need to be replaced, 94th Street and 114th. The estimated construction costs on that were $416,000. The funding was included in the 2017 and the, and 2018 budgets. In order to start that, the necessary engineering and the environmental permitting, I would need to issue a purchase order to de Blasio and Associates for $34,000. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that in order to start that process that I'd have to.
Did you say that'll cover both, the $430,000?
I'm sorry, what?
You said there's the two bulkheads.
Total $416,000 for both.
For both, okay.
So I just wanted to bring that to your attention because that, those two are issue, issues that could be creating flooding right now too, so.
Before we close that, that bulkhead, I just, moving forward, when we zero in on what, what we'd like to do and we're ready to start changing ordinances, I think we got it, you know, we have to hear from the public, the payfront owners, and maybe have, maybe have some bulkhead construction people in in case there's some obvious thing that we all overlooked, you know, that proposed something that can't be done.
Right.
Just, just to make sure everybody knows what it is we're about to do before we do it.
Because we talked about a targeted mailing to those people with the four-foot bulkheads.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I agree, and having a, a separate meeting just for that to discuss.
Like an educational, why, here's what's happening.
Is there a reason we're, we're going all the way out to 2050? Is that what you said, 2050?
Yeah, that's actually a requirement under the CRS program. They're requiring you to do all of your analysis and protection at the 2050, actually the 2100 is a requirement, so.
Really, that far in a way?
Under the, under the watershed management plan that Stockton is working on right now, part of their analysis has to go to 2100.
Up to that time, but I meant, aren't you allowing, that's not what I was talking about. I was talking about allowing bulkheads that are lower to change up until 2050? Or did I misunderstand that?
Well, that's, yeah. I think it's the 2050 are the ones that are not, that we've deemed at this point are not problematic that in terms of the height of the flooding.
There's two different things here, that 2050 comes in as a planning horizon because the bulkhead duration is about 30 years.
Right.
So you want to pick a number that is going to be valuable by the time somebody has to. I'd be pretty upset if I built a bulkhead 10 years ago, in 10 years, it's, it's superfluous in terms of what I need. So one of the timelines is 2050, and that's based on the, the duration of longevity of the bulkhead. So you'd want it to be in a certain place. The second number is 2100, is related to the CRS numbers where Jill's required to plan out to 2100 and to use a rate of sea level rise that the Army Corps projected as an intermediate rate of rise. And that rise calls for two feet of rise as your planning number. So that's saying the, the ocean will be two feet higher at that point, you need to plan for that. So that's a, a variable that's in here. So that's part of the reason that eight came into play. If we recall, Mark, you said, from some of your conversations earlier, you suggested a 7.5 number. And the group considered that and then kind of bumped up to eight, thinking we had that other time horizon and, at the rate of rise. So that, that's where I think the two numbers came from, I think to 2050. I think there was some confusion, maybe we should probably look back, that might be partly my fault in terms of what the grandfathering windows were, in terms of how long. That was part, something that was, it was originally two, then went to five, and then we didn't know what you would do for somebody over six. That gets into, if they just built something, they built it at six, but they would have built it at six, you know, at a minimum of 6.2. Would have been a minimum based on your current ordinance, and a lot of people would have gone higher than that anyway. So I think one of the key things that we need to do is the, the report that came back from Stockton and all the maps he gave us was based on a point, a bulkhead point. And all the curves we had that said, how many points are there below a certain point to try to get an understanding of how many people would be impacted at each individual level. So those are two variables, right? How many people are impacted that have a bulkhead of height X? And then the other one was how frequently does an elevation of that level flood? And there are clear break points, and that's where we get at the picking, if you look at the five, at five feet, I'm going to have it right here, that, that five versus 5.5, a bulkhead that's, that's four-and-a-half feet high floods twice a year. Tides come over that bulkhead twice a year. Okay, so if you go to five feet, it only happens, it happens a little less than once a year, but it happens basically once a year. When you go to 5.5, it happens once every five years. So the argument being, you know, when you're trying to pick a height, certainly you would, you wouldn't spend a lot of effort chasing people down and letting them stay at five, you'd push them to five and a half. So that's where some of those numbers came from, and that doesn't really, and those are just at current levels. That's at the current sea level rate, it doesn't include anything moving up. So if you want to pad that at all, to say sea level's moving, and sea level's up six inches since, you know, since 19, since the mid 1980s. So it's moving at that kind of rate. So when you're talking about six inches in your decision-making, you're losing that already. And what that means is the, you know, your, your zero line is higher, and any storm then adds on top of that. And a lot of these projections are saying things like these hundred-year storms, right? A storm that comes with that kind of a frequency, we're getting those annually now. And it, it's just getting something like Sandy, if, you know, if you take some of those big storms in Sandy, if that Sandy happens again the exact same way it did, the exact same effects here, but that happens 10 years from now, we would have had a different impact from that. So that's what this all planning is about, and it really comes down from a policy perspective is, is how conservative the borough wants to be. And then the challenge is you're talking about making a decision for somebody that does something that has a 30-year lifespan potentially. So that's, that's, I think, some of the challenges of this. But I do think a key piece to this that would probably be really helpful if we can get the data, the maps that, as I said, that, that Stu Farrell gave you that had this kind of, I don't know if you recall this, this distribution, telling you the number of bulkheads that are in each, in each height. But it's not the number of bulkheads, it's the number of points they shot. So for example, at, just totally as an example off the top of my head, the, the yacht club. There was something like 17 points at the yacht club because they shot it all around. So you'll get 17 of the points in a bunch of these is from one property. And other places had three or four points per property. So what we need to do is convert the points to properties. And see how many there are, and that'll help us understand this curve. That'll make you make a decision if you choose five, how many people. And then on top of that, I would go one step further, and we can look at the maps of where you know you're having flooding and find out which bulkheads are low that are in the areas where you're having flooding. And that would get to some of the questions you're asking, how many people does that capture?
How many?
How immediate is the?
How much money's needed?
And how immediate is the, is the, is the fix? You might not be chasing down somebody with a bulkhead at five if they happen to be in a high part of the island that doesn't flood anyway. So some of those will fall out, but if you start.
As soon as the properties are identified, then you'll see some of that fall out.
And that's what we need to, and we, Jill thought it through, and we got the data in a form we can use so that we can make those analyses from just the, the points.
So what do you have to do? You have to look at Stu Farrell's stuff and enter it yourself in like?
She's got the spreadsheet, that's why we haven't entered it ourselves. She's got it, now we have to flip it around and map it to, and he gave her that. She's got a file of the plat, of the plat maps, the properties, and the property address, the property plat, and then the points. And we can run them together and merge the points to a, to a point, to a, to a property.
To a property.
Yeah, so that's what we don't have right now, and I think that'll go a long way to answer. It'll just give us a lot more information about the things you're correctly concerned about in terms of how you think about this. So that's a step we haven't done, and I suspect you're going to want it by Tuesday.
Are we going to have that by Tuesday?
If someone gives anyone the data, we might have it by Tuesday.
I'll do my best.
Okay.
Maybe we can all do it.
But I think that's, that's, that's what'll help, I think, for, for some of these questions. And just really having a handle on, you know, we were sitting there with sheets, where's the fours? Where are, where are they? And they're, they're scattered about, it's not, so.
Got it.
And I think.
Anything else on bulkheads?
I think we're, it's not, whatever solutions or recommended solutions we come up with and end up implementing, I mean, remember, it is an island, it is going to flood sometimes. It's not, we're not going to be able to stop any water from ever, you know, depending on the size of the storm.
Mitigate.
True.
There's that word again, yeah, we're just going to make it better, we're going to make it better.
Till Mother Nature says otherwise.
Right. The next discussion is on the proposal for the study of the flood-prone areas of the borough, which would actually tie in also to the, the bulkhead and to the flood mitigation grant and the flood mitigation study that is currently being done. And as you, as you recall, the suggestion was made by members of SHPOA that we, we get a quote from Stu Farrell from the Coastal Research Center to do the study of flood-prone areas of the borough, similar to the project that is currently being done in Avalon. The objective and scope of that work was to establish a data collection network and geodatabase that can be used to quantify coastal flood events and provide the range of those impacts to the borough. This will be accomplished by establishing a series of digital water sensors at known sites of chronic flooding and collecting the flood and water depth information at those sites. This, this proposal has been discussed both in the Natural Resource and the Flood Ad Hoc Committee. It was determined that this information will be helpful moving forward, especially when applying for flood remediation grants. SHPOA has already contributed $5,000 towards this project. And we did ask if they would increase this contribution, and I'm happy to report that they have agreed to an additional contribution of $2,000, which would make their, their total contribution to the project $7,000. If council is agreeable, the borough could issue the PO2 Coastal Research Center to begin the project, total cost being $21,599.59, $7,000 being paid from the grant from SHPOA, leaving the borough's cost at $14,599.59. So I am looking for some kind of direction there to be able to move forward with that.
Thoughts? Because you want that done this meeting or?
If, yes.
I would think the regular meeting. Yeah, I would think we're, we're getting to a point where we need to get moving on it to get the.
Yes, yes.
Sensors in place.
Yes.
And there was some kind of a reference to a, a letter last year where SHPOA originally offered to pay 30% or 33% of the project initially.
The, yes, and, and originally, when they looked at it, the proposal wasn't as, as expensive, it wasn't the 21. I think that those figures were based on what was being done in Avalon and Longport, which was slightly different.
Okay.
With that.
I was happy to see that they would grant another $2,000. Thoughts?
That to the meeting, a motion for that?
Good.
You're good?
Good.
Mantora?
I'm fine, it sounds good.
Thank you. That's all I have for natural resources.
So what does that mean? Do you need anything else from us to?
No, I'll, I'll prepare the, the purchase order and send it around for official signatures from council.
Do we need to do a motion on that at the regular meeting?
I think the clerk would probably prefer that, yes.
Would you clerk?
Yes, she would.
So we shall do that.
And then that can get started.
Thank you.
You're done, Lenore's next.
Just one thing real quick, we might want to look at the timeline of that proposal. If you're moving it forward now, you're going to, you should adjust it because, because it's spring and there's not going to be any more storms.
I keep thinking March.
March.
That I just do must.
Get through March.
Yes, it's spring. Okay, and just a couple of comments I have for you, just to follow up on the flood mitigation conversations. There's another component of that work that Borough is working with the Wetlands Institute to try to create some educational materials to help discuss and talk about these issues that are fairly complex in terms of thinking about sea level, sea level rise rates, what bulkhead heights are, where the heck zero is anyway, I think is one of my fun, fun slides. So we'll be working on some of those things that'll be used to help council understand and be better prepared to ask questions about some of these things, as well as potentially for public meetings and website information and all that kind of stuff. So that's kind of ongoing, and we'll be working to determine what kind of material that is, timelines, when you guys want presentations and all that. So that's a component of this work happening as well.
Just occurred to me that perhaps one of them may be at that spring meeting of SHPOA that we could maybe see, if, if, based on Lenore's availability, because I bet you that would be something.
June.
Is it the second or the first Saturday in June? It's one or the other, it's the first? The first Saturday in June, if we added that to the overall Borough presentation, I think that might be the time and place to do it. You think?
Yes, yep. And then the people that do have bulkheads.
Then we do a whole, right.
Should be another time.
Or, almost like, because even maybe at some point, like I said, with that targeting mailing, like an invitation thing to, to some of those folks would have to be.
To go to the June thing.
To, no, to have something else, it's maybe more of a one-on-one type thing. But I think maybe just to educate the second homeowners and just to bring everybody up to speed as to what we're doing and sea level rise and so on and so forth, I think would be advantageous. But I think when we're talking about those other folks that we could be two years, that that's almost like a targeted mailing, meet here, RSVP. You'll have, you'll have Lenore here, you'll have engineers here to answer your questions. We can give it to you in a fashion you understand. I think that's going to have to be like a real targeted effort, those people who are going to be on a limited time.
One I think is, you know, as you all know way better than I, is understanding what, where you all are in the decision process by June or May, so we have some time. And what is, is part of that presentation or not. If you haven't really made bulkhead height decisions yet, then maybe the conversation is why it's important and what kind of considerations are there and what's happening, just that kind of information that people have so that they're better in a position to evaluate and understand the information being presented to them. I think that's the idea behind it, so we can, you know, figure out where you are and, and what makes sense for the, for the SHPOA component of it, but I think that's, that is a good place. And, you know, word's going to get out fairly quickly that you're thinking about this, you're talking about this.
Right.
The more you can get ahead of it.
So a bit of a captive audience too.
Yeah, one I found was people.
You know.
You try to get people information ahead of them making up their mind about something because changing people's minds is nearly impossible.
So just something that we could think about doing it then, but also. So, yeah, because what you're saying is you would do a couple of these different educational.
Yep, at different points on different topics.
To hit different people.
As different things are happening, that was the idea, and we didn't, we didn't specify what that would be. That would be sort of a subject to conversations. Yeah, so that's in the mix. And then the other key item to talk about, as many of you might have noted, if you looked out your window, the Army Corps of Engineers is dredging the Intracoastal Waterway in, basically behind Sedge Island at the Big Bend, sort of near the CDF. That's their, their recurring problem spot, that's, that sands up quite a bit. I think I learned today that it's at 3.2 feet is the shallow point on that already. So, so they'll, they're in the, the dredge is, is here. It's the Fullerton Barnegat Bay Dredging Company is here, as I said, under contract with the Army Corps. And they're dredging between markers 419 and 421. It's that place you know well. The, they're supposed to be starting, they'll prob, they're laying pipe now, effectively, they got here on Saturday. And they'll be, this is part of a beneficial reuse project that many of you are familiar with from the fall of 2014, when they put sand up to build an elevated nesting habitat for some of the beach nesting birds that's out across, from your place. So they're adding more sand.
That was the spraying, right, the fine spray?
Yeah, this was actually, they built that sandbar up on the, up on the, on the marsh across that area. And they're going to add sand to that area. It's a really, I think it's a pretty neat project that they're trying to do. The site was very productive, has been very productive for oyster catchers, black skimmers, least turns, all of which are on some threatened state or even federal threatened or endangered list. So a very productive site. The black skimmers, you can always tell who shows up first, the oyster catchers show up first, they're ready to go, and the skimmers kind of hang around a couple of years before they adopt the site. There was a large colony there last year. It's been, as I said, it's been very productive. One of the oyster catchers, this is Lenore's little tidbit of fun, that was banded there this year, was seen during the blizzard out, stayed in the area, he was stayed, he was out on the ice. He was skating, skating around on the ice and was trying to get a muscle out of a frozen block of ice. And he actually was successful. One of the skimmer chicks that was banded was, showed up in Naples, Florida, with the rest of you that all.
Of course, it goes to Naples, of course, from Stone Harbor to Naples, Florida. Doesn't everybody do that?
Yep, so it's kind of neat, we're finding where these birds are going, and it, and it's kind of fun. So it's been a very productive site. We also had horseshoe crab spawning out there and diamondback tarpon nesting on that site. Through time, that site has, has dropped down a little bit, and one of. And one of the things about these sites is they are designed to be kind of windswept, no vegetation. Those birds like that kind of, kind of setting. So the thinking about this is that it will be a kind of a repetitive, every kind of three-year, put a little bit of more material back out there to maintain the site. And it's, it's experimental, it's moved past the pilot phase now. It's, it's been, as I said, very successful for the sandy material. It's, it's gaining, it's, it's rapidly gaining national and even international attention as a strategy to think about doing this. And again, the, the concept of the repetitive use, marrying dredging needs with ecological restoration that's beneficial, and just how we think about that is, is pretty important. And it's, there's a lot, lot happening on that kind of a scale. So the fact that, you know, you happen to have one right in the backyard here called Ring Island is, is pretty neat. There was a second project done up behind Long Beach Island called Mordecai Island, where the Army Corps built an island in between two eroding marshes. And that too was, was re-nourished. Of course, that one was done in, over the holidays and dredge froze in for two weeks, so. We're kind of excited that it's 60 degrees out right now. But a neat project, and as I said, they're getting started. They are slated to finish March 2nd, 3rd. That's the timing for restrictions for the bird window closing, because the first birds will be back by then, so they have to be off-site. So you'll see them out there working, you'll probably see them spraying sand and all of that stuff, so. Cool project, that's why they're out there. And the, the institute's working closely with them on the design and, and monitoring of, of the site.
Is that three years it's been? Was this the third?
Three, this is the third year.
This'll be the third.
Yep, and we're just starting, last year, we're starting to get iffy with a lot of vegetation, starting to be out there, so things like that, that seems to be, you know, data will show, but that seems to be the frequency that may make some sense for them to do that. Okay, any other?
No, but I know that there was a lot of hard work done to have that happen, and I think it's great.
Yeah, it was.
This, uh...
You know, it's pretty neat, there's some, there's some good people working on that project, and, so, you know, fingers crossed, it all goes well, but...
And so what you gave us is an example of what you would do as an educational project?
Not necessarily, that was...
Sharing with everybody what we had.
This is what Lenore did for the last meeting.
Did that for the meeting to help you guys have information you need to talk about heights.
Now, everybody here has that.
Yeah, so that was just a, again, the big concern we had is how do you get from 1929 datums to zero? What's a zero? I mean, that's a big confusing part. So it was just some of that kind of stuff, and then what's sea level doing? Yeah, some of that material could be in there.
Could be used.
Like I said, some of it was targeted more to, yeah, it's stuff like that, but other things as well. Any other questions?
Questions for Lenore?
You'll be, you'll be at the meeting Tuesday, I hope, right?
I hope so.
Okay.
That's it?
All right, thanks.
Thanks.
We're done.
Anything else for natural resources?
I don't know, I have to try to think of something.
Well, somebody asked me if Stone Harbor would consider something on the beach, and it just occurred to me, now that we have some time, so nobody gasp, just...
Have something on the beach?
Yes, so it just occurred to me, well, we've got time, so I'll ask what people feel about it. Somebody asked me if we would offer some sort of an opportunity, and with having Lenore here, she could perhaps weigh in, to offer some sort of horseback riding opportunity, not where you, you come and you rent a horse, right? But people would, a horseback riding opportunity at the point. Just saying, somebody asked me, I said I would ask.
I would doubt the point would be the first choice. Years and years and years ago, now you...
Come back up to the podium here.
Now you're gonna see how old I am. If we can't get them to pick up after their dogs.
Well, no, and that was what was told to me, and let me tell you what I was told. I was told that that is, the manure is completely organic and gets absorbed into, and perhaps you can tell me if I'm wrong, because the only thing being eaten is grain and hay, and is a non-issue.
Thirty-five...
So it's, I'm just, we have time, I'm throwing it out there.
Forty-five, 50 years ago, now I don't want to give my age, but there used to be horseback riding on the beach in Atlantic City. I mean, that, that was just, you know, way back when they had a beach.
And Wildwood?
Atlantic City's beach used to be as big as Wildwood's beach, back in the day when I was young. So I'm not gonna comment on, on this right now, because like, I have to listen, but it is, it was a wonderful experience when I was 14.
And I'm not saying, you know, like I said, not horses for hire, like, you know, you go to Costa Rica and 15 of you get in a line and you get on some poor old horse and everybody goes down the ride. Not like that, I'm talking, you know, people who, you know, people who own horses or are avid riders that, you know, they, they want to know if there's some kind of an opportunity to ride the horse on, on the beach. Specifically, they stayed at the point. And, you know, I know that the point is its own beast, so to speak. So we would still have the front. If there was, you know, an opportunity, maybe one weekend in March, you pay a fee, you're allowed in between X amount of hours to come jam. You sign a very lengthy release, and you have an opportunity to come and do some horseback riding on the beach.
Judy, you're blushing.
Just everybody think about it.
Are you expecting me to comment on?
Yes.
Validity of that approach?
Is it as, that disruptive to the point, number one? Now, we wouldn't be galloping through the dunes. But seriously, in your opinion, not a good mix, no matter what time of year.
So I would, I would say that there is a lot of concern at the point to restrict dogs 100% of the time because of their perception of other animals as them being a disturbance and a predator. I'm thinking that a horse would probably fall within that same sort of use level. I mean, that's, I would see it as an incompatible use, and I suspect that the regulatory powers that be at the state and federal level would think that would be an incompatible use. From a disturbance perspective, separate from, so, so just the, the, a separate issue entirely related to animal waste, that people say, so separate completely from that, but there's a lot of things that are natural in this world that I don't necessarily think I want to be around.
Right.
Kind of throwing that out there, one of which being E. coli, and, you know.
Okay.
So, but people use that a lot, it's natural at the...
Right, and I'm just saying, oh, okay, because I don't know.
Do you want to be in it, is the question?
I don't know, okay.
I'm just saying, there's a lot of, natural isn't, there's a lot of natural things that are bad. That's unnatural as an overriding thing, is not necessarily the component.
So the answer's no?
I thought it was polite, the answer.
No, that's not up to me, but I would think if you went to the folks we've met with, that that would, they would raise concerns relative to disturbance.
Okay, which makes sense to me, because that was even what I was thinking when I was being asked. There was, ah, well, especially, like I said, now the point is its own beast.
Yeah, if you want to consider a front beach, that's, that's a different question.
Then that's a whole different question.
I'm also suspecting they really don't want to ride there, you know, if there's a time when it would be less disturbance out there, I'd say February.
Yeah.
But who wants to ride a horse on the beach on February? I'm just saying that, they're gonna want to be there at the types of times.
I think these guys are riding them all the time everywhere. I don't think that the weather deters them.
I just think it's a...
Okay.
The point is a really small place with, that's, you know, when you look at the, you look at a map of the coastline here, there's not that many places that are open and wild, and to just keep, you know, that's the challenge with these sites, they just keep pop, you know, it's too much happening in a small area that...
Thank you.
Competitive use, that's not compatible.
Okay, thank you.
How did I do?
You did good. Is there anything else in natural resource that you can think of, Joe? I think we're pretty much busy with everything. That's it.
That's it?
That's it.
Anything for the good of the organization?